Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regular city council meeting for Thursday, December 19th. The council will also be sitting as the library board, housing authority board, and representing the redevelopment successor agency. So if you would please stand now, and Councilman Wile will lead us in the salute to our flag.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's nice to see you all today, and hopefully we won't have a fire over the next few minutes because we got the whole fire patrol here, whole fire stations, so try and protect our city. Let's see, next on the agenda is Cindy, and would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Heinz.
President.
Councilmember Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Potem Smotrich.
Here.
Councilmember Wile.
Here.
And Mayor Kite.
Here. Thank you. Okay, today we have a special presentation, one of a couple, but first of all, I'd like to invite Fire Captain Jay Ringhofer and firefighter Tom McBride to come down. And as Battalion Chief Rick Griggs here?
He's not here. Okay.
Casey, would you like to come down?
Jay, nice to see you. Thanks for coming down. There was a special recommendation from the Battalion Chief for two awards which we're going to give out today to Jay and Tom. And Casey, would you like to give a brief description of what we're awarding this for?
Basically, it's for Captain Ringhofer and firefighter paramedic Tom McBride for their efforts that they do for the CERT program, as well as public safety CPR and the Public Access Defibrillation Program in the City of Rancho Mirage, both to the citizens and the employees in Rancho Mirage.
And how long have you guys been doing the training here in Rancho Mirage?
The CERT training we've been doing for probably the past four to five years. CPR, with the need from the city staff, we started last year getting the training so we could do the city staff here.
Britt? Yeah, yeah. And what else? Have you done training in anything else, or has it primarily been focused on the CPR?
Well, the CERT program, city staff, you know, the CERT program, 14 staff, 14. Yeah, 14, we have 14, and roughly each team is a surprise. You want me to be the un-speaker, huh? Okay. Well, CERT is basically designed to teach somebody how to be self-sufficient during an emergency, whether earthquake, flood, fire type stuff like that. So, and then incorporate that, the program also, to work as a team. So, and then the city has been gracious to provide the staff members to come out and the backing of us to do this program.
And if there's anybody out in the public that would like to participate in the training in the future, how do they go about doing that? Tom, can you?
Okay. That's where we're... The CERT program, initially, we started with the city staff, because that's a localized group that we have a lot of interaction with. So now, we're starting to incorporate that. We built our team, and now we're going to try to go out and start teaching into the public communities around Rancho Mirage. So we're working on getting those classes lined up.
Well, we have the two awards here, and they are certificates of appreciation to Captain Jay Ringhofer, an appreciation for his outstanding and dedicated AED slash CPR training services to the City of Rancho Mirage. Congratulations. And also another certificate of appreciation to firefighter two, paramedic Tom G. McBride, an appreciation for his outstanding and dedicated AED slash CPR training services to the City of Rancho Mirage. Congratulations, Tom. We are very fortunate to have outstanding personnel like this to work in the City of Rancho Mirage and provide the fire protection that we all realize is out there, and they Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation of the City of Rancho Mirage Employees of the Year, and our city manager, Randy Binder, will be handling this.
Yesterday at the holiday luncheon, I made them line up with Santa hats on, but we won't do that today. So these are our, four of our five employees of the year. This is the most prestigious honor awarded to a city employee. These individuals were chosen from their peers for outstanding service to the community. I presented this to them yesterday at the city holiday luncheon, but I feel that it's important to publicly recognize these fine employees this afternoon. First one, library clerk Kelly Sinlau was hired in September of 2005. She is passionate about her job and serving the public. She is described as portraying a positive attitude toward work responsibilities and her coworkers. I've been told she serves as a role model for others, and is in very high demand. Congratulations, Kelly, for winning this award. Jeremy Gleim, planning technician, is described, as others, as productive, exhibiting commitment to quality and carrying out job responsibilities, and is an asset to his department. He is willing to take initiative and accepts duties above and beyond. He works the front planning counter. Jeremy is pleasant and smiling every day. Please give a round of applause for Jeremy Gleim, planning technician.
Jeremy, are you smiling? Okay, good.
David Bryant, library director, was hired in April of 2008 at a critical point in the library's direction. He was instructed to maintain services while paring down the operating budget. David was entrusted to expand programs and lead his staff into the second decade of the 21st century. This at a time when library technology is changing rapidly. Congratulations, David, for a job well done. Okay, last but not least is marketing manager Robert Barrett. He was hired in September of 2007. The city has benefited tremendously from his knowledge and innovative ideas. He loves what he does and takes pride in his work. He motivates the staff around him. Robert headed up the creation of the new city website. He has put Rancho Mirage on the map as the most desirable destination to visit. He is all about wallet acquisition. Please join me in congratulating Robert Barrett, marketing manager, for this award.
Congratulations again to the four outstanding members of the Rancho Mirage team here. Look forward to another great year.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, we also had Annie Sanfilippo, our accounting technician. She experienced a loss in her family recently. She's not here to accept her award. She was also awarded for the Employee of the Year this year. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Annie. Okay, we'll now move on to non-agenda public comments, and this is a time when anybody in the audience can speak on those items that are not included in today's agenda. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming in today. And if there's anybody who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, if you would please raise your hand, and we'll call you forward. Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward?
Mayor, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Zahid Hussain. I'm a full-time resident of the City of Rancho Mirage. I have invented a household product. This product will get rid of all the cables, wires, behind televisions and computer desks. I'm sure that everybody has this issue. And it's called Cable Genie. My patent is pending, and lawyers are working on a non-provisional application as we speak. Cable Genie is proudly made in USA, no China. It's made of recycled product, and it's recyclable. It is, it will sell for under $25, Cable Genie. Motto is keep it neat, keep it clean. I'm in need for fundings to move forward. If this council will consider a loan or grant, or lead me to the right direction, I would be happy to provide further information. Thank you for your time and consideration. You can reach me via cellphone or my email, which I have given to Cindy, and I truly appreciate your time.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I have a request from Stanley Levinson. Hello, Stan.
Hi, Richard. Mayor Kite, members of the council, I'm here for two reasons. One, I want to thank Scott Heinz for lending his knowledge and assistance to me when the continuing Rancho Mirage Country Club problems go on, and I guess, Randy, you probably know those problems better and longer than anybody else here. And secondly, I'd like to thank Sandra Johnson of the Code Enforcement Department, who came out and spent time with me, and has been on there until I got kicked off the golf course in her presence, and anyway, that was just another little moment of brilliance. And anyway, the problems continue, and Ms. Johnson has made an effort to somewhat solidify and accomplish certain things that need to be done over there, and the deficiencies continue, and as I've discussed with her, you can force them to do things right one time, but then it goes downhill from there, and the whole matter starts all over again. So she's trying to work out a situation whereby they know what they have to do and when they have to do it. And they're mainly landscape problems and the amassing garbage and stuff in the maintenance area that probably attracts rats and other kinds of varmint. So anyway, I wanted to take and make time to come in and express my thanks to you, Scott, and Randy, and to Sandra Johnson. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming in. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda today? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is...
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to introduce someone.
Yes, you may.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mary Perry. Mary is the Deputy Director of Communications and Public Affairs at the Annenberg Retreat at Sunnylands. Mary is always available to come to a council meeting to bring us up to date on all the many activities that are available at Sunnylands, that are available free to our residents. She is, in addition to the property, she's a treasured asset as well. Mary, we welcome you, and we look forward to hearing about Sunnylands.
Thank you so much. And I jumped up a minute ago and ran outside to congratulate Jay and Tom, because I have to tell you that about, oh, three and a half years ago, when Sunnylands was getting ready, getting everything ready to open, how incredible the fire department and the sheriff's department were, and continue to be, for Sunnylands. They've all been out before we opened to have a complete understanding and a complete feel for the property, so that should one of our esteemed guests need assistance, or should we have any problems of any kind, the sheriff's department and the fire department are just ready to go, and just so helpful, so I really appreciate it. And I do want to publicly congratulate the people who won your Employee of the Year. You know that we work very closely with David Bryant. We have a lecture series that we do at the library, and David and his team are just phenomenal. And of course, we work very closely with Robert Barrett to help continue to publicize the asset of Sunnylands as a Rancho Mirage asset. So congratulations to everybody. Really exciting and really great team. We have a lot going on, of course, not so much in December, but in January, we kick in full gear. We have a new exhibition opening in January. Currently, we have the exhibition on the Chinese Cloisonné, which I know most of you have enjoyed. It was just one of those quirks of fate, that that was our exhibition right before President Xi arrived. You know, I guess it was in the stars meant to be. This year's exhibition is going to be a little bit different. This will be our third exhibition, and it's called, yes, please, oh, actually, it's called "The Pleasure of Your Company: Entertaining at Sunnylands." And rather than an art exhibition, it's an experience exhibition, and we'll be featuring five of the major events that have happened at Sunnylands. We'll be featuring the 1976 wedding of Barbara and Frank Sinatra. We will feature the visit by Queen Elizabeth II. We will feature the state dinner that George Bush had for Prime Minister Caifu. And finally, the Sunnyland Summit with President Obama and President Xi. That exhibition will open on Sunday, January 19th. It will open as part of our regular Third Sunday program, which we have monthly during season, and we will be celebrating. The title of that day is called "Yes, Please, No, Thank You: Manners Today." And we will be having a lovely lady come and talk about and demonstrate proper manners for today's world. So saying thank you, not wearing your hat in a restaurant, those kinds of things. It'll be really fun to have her. So that's Sunday, January 19th, 9:30 to 2:00, so we hope everybody will come to that. We will then have the first of our lecture series at the Rancho Mirage Library on Thursday, January 30th at 2:00 PM, and that will be Ann Rowe, our curator, who will speak about this exhibition. At that point, we are hopeful that the exhibition catalog will be ready and available for purchase at Sunnylands, so let's hope for that. And I'll tell you about February when I come back in January. But what I would like to do, I don't know, do we have any more brochures in City Hall? Do we need any more? I can leave some.
That would be great, if you'd leave them with Cindy.
We're okay. All right, I'll give these to you. And I'm going to give you each a New Year's card. At Sunnylands, we don't send Christmas cards. We send New Year's cards, and we wish you all a very sunny New Year's, and thank you very much for all of your support.
Thank you, Mary, for being here today. Okay, we'll now move on out of non-agenda public comments to city council comments, and I'll start on my left with Iris. Do you have any comments today?
Sure. It's with great pride that I mentioned that we had a wonderful event last Sunday evening at the Rancho Mirage Library, and it was hosted really by the Rancho Mirage Foundation, and it was its donor appreciation event, which is held annually. It was quite an amazing feat, because the entire community room was transformed into a lovely cabaret. They had large tables and small tables, high tables and low tables, and they all had black tablecloths with some red highlighted lighting, and it really made it into a different kind of experience that the donors have never before been able to experience. There were 140 library donors that gathered with the library foundation board, and they all loved the music from the Palm Springs High School Jazz Orchestra. It was a wonderful evening with library donors thanked for their contributions, which fund the programming, the books, the media, and the children's summer reading programs. The new donors also heard about some up-and-coming plans for the library, which will have been resulted in a space planning effort that's going to take place in 2014. For those of you who are not familiar with it, our library welcomes 1,100 people on an average day. They check out 2,000 books every day, which comes to about 600,000 books per year, and they offer programs for 40,000 people per year. It's quite a remarkable place, and if you don't spend much time there, you may want to make it on your resolution for the next year to visit more often. The library, needless to say, holds a leadership position statewide in California in delivering exceptional services with their programming and their collections to the residents. And if you think about it, we're so fortunate to be able to provide all of these things to our residents and our visitors free of charge. Keep in mind that all the services and programs and activities are free of charge, but they do come at a cost. And even though it's free to the public, it's not entirely free. So if you feel like you want to make a contribution or a donation, please don't hesitate. We can always use the extra few dollars that the city, that community is willing to provide and all of our visitors want to provide, so don't hesitate to make a contribution. We can always use it. Thank you again, and back to you.
Thank you. You did neglect to mention that we had our city's professional dance team there, headed up by our city attorney.
That's right.
Steve Quintanilla.
Yes.
Okay, Dana.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to give a report to those who wondered if Willie Nelson was still up to the Willie Nelson of old. He played at the, gave a concert at the McCollum Theater a few nights ago, and I got to tell you, Willie Nelson is the same Willie Nelson. He's in his 80s somewhere, and he's got all of the energy and voice that he, it seems like at least, that he's ever had. So anyway, that report is out of the way. I would like to ask Robert Barrett if he would, he and Kurt Watts would undertake a study that's somewhat similar, or certainly provoked by the article in the Desert Sun today concerning vacation rentals and the problems that they're having in Palm Springs. I'm wondering if we could have a survey done of some sort in the Mag Falls area and in the Tammerisk area, where most of the vacation rentals exist, to see how neighbors are feeling about it, and perhaps we could get a report back to the city council at a meeting or two subsequent from now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dana. Move down to my right, Scott. It's good to have you back.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I missed you. I just wanted to say a special thank you to a lot of our public safety employees and even a few of our city hall employees who will be working on Christmas Day. Particularly, our fire and police, there'll be folks that'll be in the fire stations and in the police stations away from their families on Christmas Day to make sure that we're all safe. If you think about it, you might drop a plate of cookies by or something to say thanks, because they're going to be away from their families. We also have some of our city hall employees, some of our code complaints people and others that will also be working on Christmas Day. So thank you for your dedicated service to our city and your profession, and we just really appreciate it, and we'll be thinking about you as we're celebrating the day with our families, so thanks.
Well, don't forget about the city council when they're passing out cookies, you know.
That's... And thank you to the city council for passing out cookies.
Ted, you have a comment?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Christmas is the time that where there's many gatherings, and it's a time for family and friends to get together. I had occasion to be at several Christmas parties over the weekend, and one of the opportunities as a council person is to listen and meet our constituents. And this was enjoyable, because it was certainly an informal gathering. But on the other hand, one of our residents said to me, "I have a problem with the speeding on Gerald Ford." They live at Mission Hills, as I do, and they said, "When we exit the Inverness Gate, the speed limit is oftentimes considerably faster than the 50 miles that there are drag racing and motorcyclists that exceed the limit. Is there anything that can be done?" And so I contacted our city manager, Randy Binder, and literally within hours, Randy had made a request and arrangements for a speed trailer to be located on Gerald Ford this coming weekend, and in addition to that, is contacting Lieutenant Shields, so that the deputies will pay particular attention to this area. And it, again, shows the responsiveness of our city when we hear something from our residents that is of concern. The responsibility of a city council person is literally 24/7. And I learned this to some degree the first week I was on the city council, when I was making my daily stop at Starbucks, and a constituent came up and said that they were disturbed and awakened early in the morning by the gardeners. And I said that we have an ordinance. Gardeners are not allowed to start before a certain hour, excepting on the golf course, and I can tell you, those people have responded and said, "Thanks very much. We're now sleeping in later." So those are the sort of things that the city council does and responds to, and it's a privilege to be able to do that. And most important of all, we have the anticipation of a wonderful year coming up. We look forward to the opening of the Ritz in March, the construction of the amphitheater and a new and exciting whitewater park, the possible transfer of the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center to a new developer that will bring the center back to life with many small and large businesses locating in the center. New homes are now under construction for the first time in a number of years, so it will be an amazing year. And most important of all, the new year brings us an opportunity to cherish our friendships, love of our family, and be thankful for the opportunity that we have living in this wonderful city, and I wish you all a happy and healthy new year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. At this point, we'll interrupt council comments to the city manager comments, who is going to make a brief comment here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to take a moment to recognize the following employees for their years of service to the City of Rancho Mirage. Employees that have worked for the city for five years are Jeff Benson, Raquel Solomon, Greg Trouzdel, David Bryant, Victor Hawkins, Dustin Ingham, Thomas Lutkin, Carol Magner, Maribel Messersmith, June Corrigan, Astrid Jomenski, and Sandra Russell. For 10 years of service to the city, Cindy Scott, Sean Smith, Monique Lort, and Marvin Norman. And the following individuals have served the city for 15 years. Steve Buchanan, Virginia Ortega, Michael Solange, Bill Harrison, Roger Manning, Noel Chicas, and Bill Enos. Please join me in thanking these fine employees for their service to the fine city of Rancho And happy birthday today to our finance director, Isaiah Hagerman.
Hey, congratulations, Isaiah.
Thank you.
I'd like to close council comments with an announcement of an exciting new art venue in Rancho Mirage, and that's the New Art Walk at the River. City of Rancho Mirage is sponsoring three temporary art galleries at the River. The River Suites will be used for the galleries, and each will house a series of artist installations between now and April of 2014. The galleries will be open daily from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM throughout the season. Artists will be on hand to greet the visitors and to discuss and sell their paintings, sculptures, and craft items. The first series... The first series of artists selected to show their work in the three galleries and be on hand to greet visitors are Leslie Adams, Elaine Matthews, Vicky Buchanan, Terney Coatsworth, Patrick Blythe, and in the third one will be Loretta Lowell. And they'll all be there to show their artwork, to talk to you about what's going on in the world of art. Our art consultant, Bill Shimskey, has been contacted or contracted with the city to select artists for these exhibitions and oversee the program to be called Art Walk at the River. So Bill is the consultant that's actually helped us with the art affair over the last few years, and he's really making an effort to get some outstanding artists at the River. So there is no cost for this event. You can drop by as you're going to dinner or shopping at the River, but there will be three new galleries, and the works will actually be rotated, so you get a good cross-section of what's going on out in the art world. So hopefully, see you all there for Art Walk at the River. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have an approval of the minutes from the meeting of December 5th.
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. And the motion carries 4-0 with one abstention. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar, and the city manager, would you like to discuss a couple of items here that we're going to pull out of the agenda for today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Staff would like to pull Agenda Item Number One and Agenda Item Number Six from the agenda, and if you could order that without objection, I'd appreciate it.
So ordered, without objection. So we'll now move on to the consent calendar, and the consent calendar are a group of items that can be passed with one blanket motion, and generally, they're very brief in content, and the city manager will discuss those items at this point. Is there any item that the council would like to pull before we begin? Okay, is there any item in the, from the audience who would like to...
I'm sorry. Item number five is a public hearing.
Right. Okay, so we'll now move on to the consent calendar, and Randy Binder, our city manager, will cover that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Item number one was pulled from the agenda. Item number two is approval of final track map 31004 Sterling Ridge, Jim Fox's project. I see him in the audience today. This is a tentative track map that was approved by the city council back on June 2, 2005. The state of California has continued the approval of tentative track maps over the years, and that's why eight years later, it's still a valid track map. The final map will subdivide seven acres of property into 11 residential lots in the RL2 zone. This is on the north side of Cypress Lane, east of Los Alamos. Seven acres into 11 lots, and the lot sizes range from 19,000 to 30,000 square feet. Some of you might recall that the pad heights were a sensitive issue that were vetted during the tentative track map public hearing process, and I've confirmed with Billy Enos, the city engineer, that the pad heights shown on the final map are in fact consistent with the council's approval of the pad heights at that time. So all of the conditions of approval have been met, along with the improvement agreement, which I signed today in anticipation of council approving the final map. Item number three on your consent calendar are approval of contracts and purchase orders. And item number four on the consent calendar are demands. We are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Are there any questions or comments on the consent calendar? Anybody in the audience would like to speak on any of those items? Seeing none, we'll go back to the council for approval of the consent calendar.
Will we approve the consent calendar? Second?
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. And the motion carries 5-0. I will now move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, and we'll go to item number five, which is the consideration of an ordinance next in order and the first reading zoning text amendment for case number ZTA 13004. And I believe Bud Cop, planning manager, will be handling this item. Bud?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This project would amend the land use table in zoning ordinance section 1710 in order to allow drugstores with the drive-through in the neighborhood commercial zone subject to a conditional use permit. Our existing code already permits drugstores with an accessory drive-through with a conditional use permit in the general commercial zone, and this amendment would simply allow them with a conditional use permit in the neighborhood commercial zone as well. Also, the proposed amendment clarifies the definition of retail stores and general merchandise related to drugstores in the definition section 1790. We're recommending that the reference to the general commercial zone be eliminated in the definition section since permitted and conditionally permitted uses are more appropriately regulated by the land use table in section 1710. The neighborhood commercial zone is characterized by areas appropriate for neighborhood-scale shopping centers compatible with adjacent residential areas, and neighborhood commercial oftentimes, most oftentimes, includes supermarkets and drugstores on sites generally eight to 10 acres in size and provides a maximum of about 80,000 to 100,000 square feet of gross floor area. It's become increasingly common for drugstores to include drive-through canopies for the convenience of customers that are ill or customers that are unable to leave their vehicles for various reasons, and also to maintain public health standards so that ill customers don't have to interact with or interface with other customers or employees. This proposed specific plan amendment does not affect areas already covered by a specific plan. The four areas of the city that would be primarily impacted by this proposed amendment include the Atrium Shopping Center on Highway 111 at Atrium Way, the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center at the northeast corner of Highway 111 and Bob Hope Drive, Country Club Village Shopping Center at the southwest corner of Country Club in Monterey, and then the fourth area would be the Pavilion Shopping Center at the southwest corner of Bob Hope and Gerald Ford Drives. If an applicant chooses to submit a conditional use permit for a drugstore with a drive-through, that conditional use permit does require site-specific environmental review. It would require architectural review board review and also a planning commission public hearing and recommendation to the city council for final approval. This project was reviewed by the city, by the planning commission, and the planning commission recommends that the city council find this project exempt under CEQA, and they recommend adoption of the two attached ordinance amendments, and staff would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Bud. Are there any questions or comments from staff on this public hearing item?
Love to see the zoning map on the PowerPoint, Bud. It gives me a warm feeling inside.
Okay, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for comments or a motion, please. Anybody would like to make a motion on this?
I would love to. I would move that the city council find that this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, under CEQA guidelines, section 15061B3, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the zoning text amendment may have a significant effect on the environment. Should we take them both at once?
Yes, please.
I would also move that we adopt the attached ordinance amendment pursuant to case number ZTA 13004, amending Title 17, section 17.10.012 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to permit drugstores with a drive-through in the neighborhood commercial zoning district subject to a conditional use permit, and to amend section 17.90.020 for clarification purposes.
Thank you, Dana.
I'll second that.
And there's the second. And the motion carries 5-0. We have withdrawn item number six, so under the action items, we'll now move on to item number seven, which is the approval of 2013-14 budget adjustment in the amount of $65,000 for city-initiated property abatements for 30 Calais Circle and 71525 Tangier Road. And Sandra Johnson, our code compliance manager, will bring this item forward. Sandra, it's good to see you today.
Good to see you again. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. What you have before you today is a budget adjustment request for fiscal year 2013-14 in the amount of $65,000 for city-initiated abatements with anticipated recovery of the costs through future tax assessment levies for fiscal year 1415. In fiscal year 1314, the city budgeted $35,000 for abatement activities administered by the code compliance division. These costs are typically recovered through adoption of tax assessments against the properties during the succeeding year. The majority of the costs incurred are from properties requiring summary abatement to remedy public nuisances that include imminent health and safety violations. In most instances, demolition is a rare and extreme remedy only to be utilized when the structures are determined to be uninhabitable, substandard, and/or dangerous, as with the case of the properties that are before you today. These actions were necessary to protect the public health and preserve the quality of life for the city of Rancho Mirage residents. Prior to abatement, the city complies with all required provisions of the Code of Civil Procedure, also known as due process, in providing the responsible parties with an opportunity to have their respective matters heard on appeal by an independent administrative hearing officer. With assistance from the deputy city attorney and authorization from the city manager, the city recently obtained court-issued inspection warrants, which later resulted in abatement warrants for two properties to remedy the nuisance conditions by demolition. The first property is a single-family house located at 30 Calais Circle. The initial complaint against this single-family house was received on October 22, 2012, after a fire had destroyed most of the primary dwelling unit. All that remained was the dilapidated framing, a portion of the casita, and the garage. The structures were unsecured and had become an attractive nuisance, safety hazard, and a visual blight on the community. On January 30, 2013, the code compliance staff initiated summary abatement proceedings to drain the vacated polluted stagnant water pool, and on April 13, 2013, the city boarded up the property to deter unauthorized access. The owner subsequently paid the associated fees and assured the city that she had plans to rehabilitate the property. Several subsequent notices were issued to the owner ordering various actions to be taken to bring the property into compliance with applicable codes and regulations. July 3, 2013, a notice of public nuisance in order to abate was issued ordering that the property owner or other responsible party either A) obtain a demolition permit within 10 calendar days and complete the demolition of the structure within 30 days, or alternately submit a detailed written plan with a timetable explaining how and when the structures would be rehabilitated. The notice specifically advised that failure to comply may result in the issuance of an abatement warrant authorizing the city to abate all unlawful conditions, including While technically feasible for the property to be rehabilitated, which the owner indicated she wished to do, it would be far more expensive to rehabilitate the property than to demolish and rebuild it. In arguments before the court, the city stated that it should not be required to rehabilitate a burned-out structure such as this one in order to abate a public nuisance, and that the owner has had significant time to remedy the violations and failed to do so. Therefore, demolition was appropriate. On October 11, 2013, abatement warrant was granted to demolish all structures and return the property to bare dirt with a soil stabilizer, which is also known as a sealant. The demolition permit was issued on October 22 and completed on November 15. The total cost to the city excluding legal fees was $27,335, and what you have before you is the final look of that property. The second property is a single-family house built in 1957 located at 71525 Tangier Road. Since May 4, 2011, the code compliance division has received numerous complaints regarding the appearance of this single-family house from various sources and persons. Intermittently, the property would be brought into compliance with rudimentary improvements. However, as time progressed, these efforts would succumb to the progressive deterioration of the property that began to adversely affect adjacent properties and neighbors at large. The exterior of the property contained large amounts of dry, dead plant matter and overgrown vegetation. Dead trees and debris obstructed access routes and created a harborage for vermin. The pool contained stagnant polluted water and an odor nuisance from accumulation of animal feces. The property exhibited hoarding characteristics with visible outdoor storage of clothing, household items, furniture, appliances, inoperable vehicles, rubbish, trash, junk, debris, all around the entire property. These conditions represented numerous violations of various sections of the city of Rancho Mirage municipal codes. These combined conditions, and many of them individually, constituted a serious danger to health and safety. On April 18, 2013, code compliance staff obtained an inspection warrant, authorized an inspection of the exterior and interior of the property. On April 22, the warrant was executed by members of the code compliance animal services division and the Rancho Mirage Police Department. All persons participating in the inspection were required to wear personal protective equipment, masks and gloves included. Upon entry into the property, deplorable conditions were observed, and the initial term of the inspection warrant was extended to deal with the severe hoarding condition, eradication of vermin, and a seizure of two small dogs and four exotic birds that, due to the suspicion of animal cruelty, also had to be transferred to the animal campus for medical attention. The property owner vacated the property thereafter, and representatives of the bank holding the loan on the property were given an opportunity to meet the code compliance staff to conduct an inspection of the interior of the property. At that time, the home was deemed uninhabitable and substandard based on various health and safety violations, including inadequate sanitation, dampness of habitable rooms, and mold, structure hazards, and deterioration. Another notice of public nuisance in order to abate was issued to the owner and the bank on September 16 and posted to abate the nuisance conditions within 30 days. While the bank was given another opportunity to remedy the violations, an appeal was not filed, and in fact, the bank consented to the city taking the appropriate actions to remedy the violations up to and including demolition. On October 21, 2013, an abatement warrant was granted to demolish the structures and return the property to bare dirt and a soil-stabilizer sealant. On November 1, the demolition was completed. The total cost to the city excluding legal fees was $37,630. Since the cost to demolish these two structures were not anticipated during adoption of the fiscal year 1314, staff is requesting a budget adjustment in the amount of $65,000 to cover costs incurred for contractor services and recoverable staff time. The city shall ultimately recover the combined total cost of approximately $91,000, including legal fees, during the 1415 tax assessments as a levy against each property, and may include additional costs associated with staff time and other administrative fines. No budget adjustment for associated legal fees is needed at this time. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council approves the attached proposed budget adjustment for fiscal year 1314 in the amount of $65,000 for city-initiated property abatements with anticipated recovery of these costs through future tax assessments. At this time, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to acknowledge some individuals that are in the audience today that were key in this, and that is animal service officer Mike Doherty, who took custody of the two dogs and four birds and transported them to animal services for treatment of their wounds. The four birds were able to be adopted; unfortunately, two dogs were not. Officer Brian Kephart, who assisted with the photography and video of the properties, which proved to be vital evidence in obtaining the warrants. Deputy city attorney Nick Hermsen, who worked diligently with code through the process. Nick was also complimented by Judge Chapman during the abatement of 30 Calais for the property in which the warrant was approved. And Officer Diaz, who actually managed the entire demolition process for 30 Calais Circle, which included many of the building tasks and temporary utility connections. Lastly, I'd like to thank the police department, building and safety, and our new admin assistant, Cindy Duff, for putting all this together for me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. What an outstanding job of cooperation between all of code compliance to accomplish what we have. When you look at the buildings, you just wonder how they are even standing during When you look at the buildings, you just wonder how they are even standing during the time that they did, but you guys did a great job in not only getting the problem taken care of, but doing it in a very professional manner that I'm sure reflects on all of your staff. You did a great job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, Scott.
I have a quick question. First of all, great job, everybody. What a monstrous task and kind of heart-wrenching, I think, you know, when you not only consider the animals or a person losing their home to fire, but also clearly in the case of the second property, some pretty severe mental health issues were probably at play here. And that's, what's missing from this presentation is the human face of this, not that we would put these people on display or take images, but we know that there are people behind these stories too. So my question is, in our process, when we're dealing with these types of really severe situations, do we have a way to help these individuals reach out to, say, like Health and Human Services or social work, and particularly in the case of the last property situation, without getting into any privacy issues or specifics, what do we do to help this individual kind of get back on track in their life when they're losing their home and a lot of their possessions, which for a person who hoards, it's a really horrible thing? What do we do to kind of help the humans involved in this situation in addition to rectifying the property problems?
Well, when we first went out to the property and we noticed it was occupied, obviously we made contact with the owner and found out that there were some concerns, and that's why it took so long. Actually, been working on this case for five years. It didn't get into this mode until 2011. So for five years, we've actually been working with him, trying to get him some assistance, as well as getting him to comply. So this is actually a short version of a very extensive case that's been going on for quite some time, where we've extended our assistance as well as make resources available to them through Adult Protective Services and things of that nature.
I see, so Adult Protective Services is typically the lead that comes out, and through their trained social workers can refer mental health services or relocate these folks.
Absolutely.
Well, in a lot of cases too, it's Adult Protective Services that contacts the city and our office to notify us of situations, and that's how we sometimes discover these matters. But we keep in close contact with their office on matters such as this, so these people aren't left out in the streets.
Well, I appreciate, I mean, Code Compliance, you guys are the hammers of the city, but I know from what I know of the situation that there was a tremendous amount of compassion that you showed in this as well. So besides just doing a great job at what you did, I appreciate the fact that you were kind in the process too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ted, do you have a comment?
Yes, as far as the recovery of the cost is concerned, obviously, this is a lien on the property.
Actually, it's a special assessment. We amended the code about 10 years ago to have our recovery costs recorded in special assessments against the property, because they are basically collected with the property taxes, whereas a lien, we have to wait until it's either paid off, or if the property is sold, or we have to foreclose on it. So they have to pay the property assessment every year in the same manner that the property taxes are paid, and the county collects it.
And in the event of a default on the special assessment, are there the same foreclosure proceedings?
Same foreclosure proceedings as with property taxes.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Questions down here, Iris, Dana? Okay, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward? And if you could give your name and address?
My name is Rosemary McDowell. I live on Tunis Road in Rancho Mirage, and I'm a member of the Rancho Mirage Community Association.
Welcome.
And I just wanted to come by today to say that Sandra Johnson and her staff has done a wonderful job for our association. We've been working with Code Compliance, and they brought properties up to standards in our neighborhood and improved the quality of life dramatically. And the property on Tangier was one of the properties in our neighborhood, and I'd just like to say thanks. She has a great staff. She's a great person to work with. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today and making those comments. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, can I have a motion from the council, please?
Sure. I move that the city council approves the attached proposed budget adjustment for fiscal year 121314 in the amount of $65,000 for city-initiated property abatements with anticipated recovery of these costs through future tax assessment levies in fiscal year 1415.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, please vote. And the motion carries 5-0. Thanks again to Code Compliance and all your staff. Okay, we'll now move on to item number eight, which is the consideration of modifications to a special assistance fund, SAF. And Gloria Griege, our contract specialist, will be handling this. Gloria?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, city council, this is a request for approval of modifications to the SAF guidelines for nonprofits that receive awards $5,000 or less. We need to modify them because the insurance requirements are too strict. So we'd like to remove the insurance requirements from the contract and have these nonprofits instead sign an indemnity agreement. The problems we are experiencing are that when we award funds, the cost of the insurance equals almost to the amount of the funds awarded by the city council. So we are requesting approval of those modifications. I will now turn it over to the subcommittee if they have comments.
Okay, Ted?
Well, I think Mayor Protem Spauterich and myself looked at this, and obviously, to have an insurance requirement that essentially negates and wipes out all of the good that we are attempting to do by making a contribution defeats the purpose. So council has made a recommendation that an indemnification would protect the city, and at the same time, give the charity that has been approved the opportunity to do the good that the funds are intended and directed for. So that's the purpose, and I would certainly recommend approval of the change.
Okay. Iris, do you have a comment?
Only that I would hope that the council would approve this also, because it is quite a burden for these different organizations to try to come up with insurance costs, and this will be something I know they will all be thrilled with.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
I'd just like to point out that most of these grants of $5,000 or less present very little risk to the city liability-wise, because they're actually grants. There are cases where you do provide some funding, or you provide a contribution in exchange for certain services, and those are usually, they usually exceed 5,000. So again, I don't think there's any significant risk at all posed to the city if you adopt this.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other comments, could we have, let's see, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, thank you, and we'll go to the council now for a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council approve the subcommittee's recommended modifications to the special assistance funds SAF program as set forth in this report and presented in the attached special assistance fund objectives, policies, and procedures for awards of $5,000 or less.
I would second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, please vote. Okay, and the motion carries 5-0. That was the last of the action items for today, and before we recess into closed session, I'll call on our city attorney to discuss those items, which will be reviewed today at the closed session. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council and the housing authority board now will recess into closed session to confer with its real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8 regarding property located at 42520 Bob Hope Drive. The council will also confer with its labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.8 regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees Association. The council will also confer with the city attorney regarding potential exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9. That involves one potential case. And finally, the council will confer with the city attorney pursuant to government code section 54956.9 regarding the case of City of Rancho Mirage versus All Valley Desert Cooperative.
Thank you, Steve. Before we adjourn or into recess, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. The meeting for January 2nd will not be held, so the next regular meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council will be on Thursday, January 16th, 2014. So now recess into 2014.